I lost my official clock up here, the phone's not working or something, but anyway.
Twenty-nine.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and say it's one thirty, I'm gonna call together. Rockdale Planning and Zoning Meeting of Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Roll call.
Chair Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Ratliff.
Here.
Commissioner Miles.
Here.
Commissioner Flores. Commissioner Houston. Commissioner, Commissioner Higdon.
Here.
And our Council Liaison Willie. Okay.
We have a quorum, but I, I have a technical question. When we have workshop, should I say just workshop? Or should I just keep calling it meetings?
It's a meeting.
It's a meeting. Alright. With the roll call called, we do have a quorum to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stand for invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day and for all the gifts that come with it. Lord, please just guide and direct our lives to your glory. Lord, please be with this, uh, the, this meeting, with us at this meeting and guide our thoughts and our words and our decisions that they all be, might be pleasing to you and in accordance with your will. Lord, we ask for blessings for the city of Rockdale and all of its residents. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Action items. Oh wait, citizens communications.
Uh, no sir.
No citizens communications. Action items. Number one, conduct a workshop to interview potential candidates for the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring to twenty twenty-six, February twenty twenty-six.
The applicant is not in attendance, until we may give him some time. If you wanna bump this back, we'll conduct our workshop if you're okay with that. If they arrive, we can always halt it and bring them back up to the agenda if you'd like.
I'm okay with, uh.
Whose position is this?
This is, um.
Uh, McJaney.
Next.
Yes, Janey.
I'm sorry.
For Janey Mendoza's spot.
Oh, okay.
Alright then, we'll go ahead and move to action item number two. Conduct a workshop regarding street analysis. Hey, do we submit mileage?
Do you have, uh?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ben, when y'all did your survey, did you make note of street signs that are missing?
No, they're not.
Well, no, but I mean, some of that changes 'cause as time passes, street signs go up and go down. If they're ever noticed, call us, we'll make a ticket.
Oh gosh, we could've made it this.
We were making that, we ought to take a notepad with us and, and help street department out by, by making. There's a lot of new signs around and we appreciate that, but there's some streets with no signs, so. And as an added bonus, my navigation couldn't find several of his streets.
Yeah, we have some work to do with Google.
Yeah.
Do you have the first presentation?
Is that, is that Ben's job to do that?
Um. I wasn't listening.
I think any, uh, city email would at least get a better response than just a random person, um, as far as contacting Google or Apple for adding streets to maps.
Unless you do, that will include Cornerstone.
Yeah, I mean, we, we got that, um, there's an issue at Cornerstone and it's purely up to them. I've reached out to them, but as far as the timeliness of updating it.
Alright, you ready?
Yeah, okay, uh, so this is just gonna be the first introductory one. I've significantly changed how we've done this to make it as easy as possible on you guys. Um, but Commissioner Flores asked for some examples. I know it sounds like y'all have all driven around, but in case you haven't, I provided this presentation to give some ideas of. So what we're doing, um, as Tim has brought up, which is a good point, we're gonna start with just the failing streets. Do we at least can get a list on those? By January, February timeframe for recommendation and then we'll slowly just start knocking out the rest of them. Um, I did wanna make a note as we get into this. So when we did this, when we rated them, we didn't compare them to each other for failing ratings. So there is an outlier street, you probably know what it is, it's Redbud. Um, the reason that you don't wanna use Redbud as your comparison street for all your other streets is because it's just beyond failure. It's not a common for a street to look like that. And so that's essentially what this is telling you is just to not use Redbud as your worst-case street. Because if you do that.
Do not use Redbud as a worst-case.
That makes sense.
Because if you, if you average that out, say if I say Redbud's a failing street and that's the standard of a failing street, then everything else is gonna progressively get better from that, which isn't reasonable, in staff opinion. Um, I wanted to provide you some pictures of what we took on site. They don't really do the street justice from what we took. But you can see there's cracking of the aged concrete.
Is this Redbud?
This is Redbud.
Ah, thank you.
Uh, but I took some pictures from Google Maps. This is from two years ago. This is twenty twenty-three when this was updated. Our pictures are from twenty-four. Uh, one thing that I wanted to note, I know we talked about that trees might be the cause, um, but the problem with saying that the trees are the cause is you look at the curb line. When you have this cracking and if you're gonna say that's from tree roots, then really your curb should also have significant cracking. The next picture, you're gonna do it more justice. So I was talking to Shannon about this. This tree here, if you're gonna say that this tree is causing this pavement to crack this way, then really this curb should be cracked significantly more, which makes me believe it.
Yeah.
Might not be a tree issue after all. Um, it's probably a construction issue. As far as if the rebar spacing wasn't correct, if there's rebar in it at all, or if it's just that aged. I don't know when Redbud was constructed off the top of my head. That's just something to think about. It's in our failing street list, we'll get to it when we get to it, but I just wanted to mention this before we get on to the rest of the streets.
That's a good point.
Um, dirt roads was an automatic failure, just because you're not providing any type of improved surface for them to drive on. The other criteria that we use is if there's an indication of base failure, which would be the type of cracking that's present, any unpaved roads or if the pavement life is significantly aged. Again, dirt roads are deemed as failing streets 'cause they're not paved. They also typically come with potholes 'cause they're not improved in any, in any way, so when it rains, they tend to wash out and you have the same potholes over and over. Half would be an example of this, of just a pure dirt road. They typically don't meet your right-of-way width as well, they're usually only one-lane roads. Um, half used to have a house on it, it doesn't anymore that I'm aware of. I think it may have one actually, but there used to be a couple. So just an example of that. Some other examples to provide, just to give you an idea, this is the one hundred block of Austin that's in some rough shape. These pictures that I'm gonna show you are probably as bad as it's gonna get of the ones that you can compare amongst each other as you start, as we start going through this workshop. Um, East Second, you can see there's significant cracking along this alligator cracking right at the edge of the truck here. That would be an indication of base failure for that road. Uh, Eland would be one. Um, this is the road that runs, if you look all the way to the west here, you'd be running behind Bandas. This is this road here. Significantly aged, you have a lot of edge feathering that's occurring with pavement loss. Hillier would be one that you see that there's a lot of rutting, pavement loss, cracking. It just, it's a significantly aged pavement, which is gonna be a majority of these. Houston is another dirt road example. Not all of Houston's a dirt road. This is the Hundred Block of Houston as it, I don't remember what street it intersects with, but it intersects.
Far north end of Houston?
Yes.
Yes.
This is just past the tire shop.
Okay.
Um, Lor is a good example of another failing street that's gonna be one of the worst ones you probably see. Of just, it's just significantly aged. You have edge feathering that occurs, potholes, pavement loss, all types of cracking. And those are just some examples that the commission asked for, so I wanted to provide before we get into the workshop. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Alright, well, we'll get on to the workshop. Um, to save Shannon some clicking, what I've done is I've created a PowerPoint for you guys. We'll go by street, it'll have the comments on there, it'll have pictures. I've printed off the scoring matrix, so we'll just score them as they go. It's alphabetically, but alphabetically by failing street now, so you'll see some skips along the way.
That's the new list that Shannon sent out?
Yes, the new, most recent email that you got that we asked you to look at, those are all of the streets on this list, and so we will get to them as we can. So this is the workshop for just failing streets, and this is all staff opinion, so just 'cause staff rate it as a failure does not mean planning commission has to do that. This is your own personal opinion of the street.
And there may be situations where there's a section of the street that's really bad, but the rest of the street's okay, maybe?
Yeah, and you'll see that in here. Um, we've provided by a hundred blocks, so you'll see in the color designation, I'll remind the commission as you see it. Some of the hundred blocks might be a failure, but it doesn't mean all of them are. Some of them might be poor, some of them might be average. It just depends on the street. Uh, so the first one alphabetically is gonna be Alfred that we'll look at today. Um, if you don't know where Alfred is, it's located right to the east of Houston Street, so you have Isaac to the north.
It's the one that has that little creek. The hump over the little creek bridge or whatever that is.
Yeah, I, I have on here, there, there's some flooding issues on that.
Yeah, it's.
Yes, so this is the, um, if you would've looked at the spreadsheet, this is what it looks like. I've created this slides, I just included this in case we need to revert back to it for whatever reason. So, the, we'll get into the comments of this. Um, the reason we rate it as a failure is because the type of cracking that's present tends to indicate that there's some base failure issues with this road. You also have surface loss from the age of the pavement. There's potholes that are beginning to form within it, there's edge feathering that's occurring. And then as Mr. Higden referred to, there's a bad drain installation that's well above the grade on here. It almost acts as a super speed bump in how it's designed. Uh, that would take out a tire if you, if you don't see it. Um, I've included the plot, the pricing, these are numbers from early twenty twenty-five, so I imagine that they're out of date already. But just in case, 'cause we do have a question on our scoring sheet about if the price is worth the fix of, of what we think. If you just do a mill with a two-inch overlay, you're looking at a little under twenty-eight thousand dollars, and then if you do a complete base repair and overlay, then you're looking at a little over forty-two thousand dollars.
For Alfred Street?
For Alfred Street only.
How much does, are curbs really expensive to add if you're redoing a street?
I'd have to get a quote, 'cause that's not, um, the assumption of the numbers that we're using is if there's already a curb there, then it's gonna remain. And you're just doing the mill and overlay.
And if not, not.
Right.
And, but the curbs would probably help a little bit, but at least with the feathering and the.
Yeah, it would, it would mainly help you for your drainage out there, 'cause the curb would take it to a gutter and.
The, the curb serves specifically a drainage function. It treat, makes your roadway act as a drainage way basically, to direct the water to.
Right.
A, to an inlet.
It just looks so much better when it's a curb.
I mean, it's not, it's not, it's not an aesthetic improvement, it's actually specifically for.
Right.
Otherwise, if you, you might, and, and if the road's not designed properly, you could put a curb in and then have the road hold water instead of shedding off like it's supposed to.
Base, uh, automatically, do it include the curb if you do the base repair?
No.
No, 'cause it's not existent one.
Yeah, it, it, the assumption with all these prices is what's existing, if there's a curb and sidewalk, there already are just a curb, it's existing, it's gonna remain.
As is.
Yeah, and you'll keep that as is. Anything that would be added would be added cost. If you wanted to install a curb, it'd be an added cost to whichever way you choose to do this.
So if you have a curb that's broken up, then you'll go ahead and redo that?
You could. It's not included in the prices I'm gonna give you.
Okay.
But you can, I mean.
This don't include curves at all?
This does not.
And it's fifteen thousand extra just for base repair?
Yeah.
So if you go to.
And it, it'll be that way across the board. It's gonna be significantly more expensive for a base repair.
Do it depends on how long the street is or?
It's all based on square footage, so we, we ran the square footage, it's just an estimate. These are all just estimate numbers of what we think the length of the road is, based on some measurements we were able to do on online mapping. And we came up with a square footage and then we put it in a calculation that our engineers gave us on what the prices were running at that time, and these are what the prices came up to when we put it in that formula.
Who's doing the traffic count? Is it the city's request or is that just TechStop doing their thing?
TechStop, there's a, usually a yearly traffic count, not around the holiday season, to get traffic totals on their roadways.
And do we have traffic count for Alfred Street?
There's five houses.
Yeah, I mean, there's not gonna be traffic count usually done for streets that small, um, as Dustin said. What a planner would do is we'd count the houses and then you have an average daily trips, which is right now is I think ten. So if there's five houses on a street, then you're averaging fifty trips a day on that road.
So a thousand block of Alfred, between what, what streets?
It is between Isaac and, um.
Oh, Isaac and Bullock.
Bullock, yes.
Bullock?
Bullock.
Bullock.
That's the streets that's in between.
So if we did. So is this going off for the five hundred thousand that we have for this, is the five hundred thousand, was that for the streets that we got the grant or something like that?
That is, that is to be determined. We're thinking we have five hundred thousand dollars budgeted this year and I've actually asked Mr. Brunson to go ahead and pick a small street. You know, kinda actually probably kinda like Alfred, Al- Alfred, and get a, get a quote to do a, a chip and seal for a contractor like they did on the highway over here, Wilcox, next, next door, um, and see how that product looks. Uh, to determine and what, what the cost differential is between that and asphalt, to determine whether or not that may be the route that we wanna go. Could, this is based on asphalt, correct?
This is, yes.
These costs are based on.
That's eighteen streets if you do just a mill with two overlay, two-inch overlay.
I've already got some of the costs that you requested, um, Alpha Paving doesn't do, uh, type of paving that's on four eighty-seven. So I'm gonna have to find another company, but their standard chip seal, provide for me, it didn't include in here, I, I can't, uh.
Okay.
What was the street that you asked?
I thought I got the name of the contractor from TechStop that did that.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to get that. What was the, uh, level of the street you asked me to get the price for?
I didn't, it didn't say specifically, but I said a street like.
Small street?
Like Alfred or there's a couple of streets over there beyond on the, on the east side of.
And this is one of them, I can't, it's, it's further down, um.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I, I don't know, I just.
Was it Yocle that had to?
Yocle.
Yocle.
Yocle, thank you.
I stumbled in there myself.
Yeah, yeah, Yocle is the one that I got the price for, and for the chip seal that Alpha does to do Yocle is twenty-four thousand eight hundred dollars. And that's with no underlayment work, that's with just putting it on top of what's already there. And that's not gonna be acceptable because it's in pretty bad shape and some places it's dirt, so it's gonna take some base work for the city to.
For the most part, they've done a, a base failure, but on a road in a condition you're talking about, that's automatically assumed a base failure, the Yocle, or?
Well, I don't know if I'd call it a, a base failure, it's just that what has been done there in the past doesn't cover everything and it's fallen, fallen away. The base may or may not be good to begin with. Uh, I think the assumption would be that it's not, but.
Yeah, that's, that's what I meant, I, well, we'd kinda assume that because.
And then to do, they quoted three inches, which are standard, uh, coverage use with asphalt, and to do that street in, uh, asphalt with no base work or anything else, they're actually saying cutting off the top and evaluating, but I don't think there's enough top on there for the cutoff, is, uh, fifty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And this is equivalent to?
Alfred.
Alfred?
Yeah.
So we're. Not even ten, it's almost fifteen percent more than the price quoted.
Yeah, these numbers are old, amen. These are from January of twenty-five, which doesn't sound like a lot of time when you say it, but that's a lot of things have changed since January twenty twenty-five, the increased prices, so, yeah, take these prices with a grain of salt, it's just a general idea of what you're looking at. Um, I've included the picture of when we did the, the assessment of what's out there, in case you care to, to view that. Um, but if you take a look at your scoring sheets, we can begin to score Alfred. Um, essentially what we're doing with these scoring sheets, you're gonna give it a number based on your score as a commission. I'll compile all of those numbers and then that will essentially create your list, and then I'll present that list to you when we get to that point. And then you can make your official recommendations from there of the order that you may like to see, um, the funds be used for the streets as a recommendation to the city council.
And basically, my, my goal would be for you to come up with about three years' worth of streets to do, um, and score them in order. When we, when we get a certain area based on estimates that we have, we'll put together a list for that particular year, we'll put that out for bid, probably a little bit more than we can afford um, with some alternates, and so when we get the bids, you know, we'll pare it down to what we can afford based on the bids that we receive.
Help me play a numbers game in my head. If that one street is fifty thousand dollars, so we can only do a list with about ten streets equivalent or.
Are you talking about the one we just talked about, Alfred?
Yes, sir.
I think it was for, for, with, with the base, re, repairs forty-two?
Well, he's, if I understood, it's more closer to fifty, what'd you say?
Fifty-six eight.
Fifty-six eight?
Three twenty-five.
Okay.
It depends of length of street, I mean, yeah.
Streets like that, or?
Well, and it also.
We're not, I mean, I don't know how to.
Well, it's gonna, I'll tell you that, that's not something for the planning commission to worry about. That's something I'll do on your behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Because based on your recommendations, I'll take the, what we think the prices are gonna be and then we will put it in order from there.
Okay.
And we'll work that out, but that's not something to think about at this time.
Okay, so that's.
Alfred is low volume.
It is.
Yeah, and I mean, there's four or five houses, I think, on that street.
Yeah, it falls into how long the matrix says importance of repairs?
Well, we can go down the list if you'd like, so.
Yes, please.
We can start off on the condition of the street overall, um, what the commission thinks, if they really think it's a failing street or maybe it's not as bad as staff had thought.
I rated it as a five, a failure street.
Is the commission okay with that rating?
Especially with that big hump.
Okay. Go with a five. Okay, it's only one block long, so that one, I'm assuming you'd like to rate as a five as well, since you've already rated a five. The surface condition, I'll go back to the comments of what we said. Um, you have some surface loss that's going on as well as longitudinal transverse and alligator cracking. You also have some potholes that are beginning to form with edge feathering, and then you have the, the drain installation that's well above the grade.
Can I give a, a little bit of a, maybe explanation? I think when you're looking at these costs, uh, if you wanna go strictly by what these costs are, this would be by doing Murray. Where you have a street that is high-volume, that's been coated multiple times, they strip off the top a couple of layers and then they go back and post it, I mean, uh, uh, cover it with asphalt or with a chip seal. Uh, when you're talking about Yocle or Alfred or those kinds of streets that don't have, but just a very fine layer, there's nothing to strip. You're gonna have to go back and, and re, um, fortify the underlying.
Surface condition is failing to me, but it's just two, three children, yeah, five.
Okay, um, the base condition, I know that's, you can't really tell. Um, again, your cracking kinda tells you what's going on, and when you have any type of alligator cracking, that's almost always a sure sign that you have some sort of base problems.
That and what he just said is that there's not enough layer there, so it's failing to me again, but.
Okay, then the traffic impact?
One or two.
Yeah. Joan? One, we'll go with one, it's.
One.
Minimal.
Okay, and then the num, there's only one block here, so it's automatically gonna be a one.
Correct.
Uh, and then the environment, um, you can either go with minimal development or light density. Um, this only has five houses, I would almost determine it minimal, but that's your, your decision.
I'm good with two.
Yep, two.
Two.
Alright, and then this is your personal scoring of the importance of the repair, of where you think that would list out as.
You mean as, as far as years out or whatever?
Yeah, if, if all the streets had to be done, is it this one of the streets that would be a ten-plus year?
In general, what is it, what priority?
I'll put it in a ten-year plan because we have a whole lot of streets that really need repairs, but.
Okay, so.
Talk to me, y'all tell me what y'all.
I agree, one.
So one.
Okay, and then the cost of it, um, these are the general numbers that you have. Again, you'll, if you're gonna repair a street that has base problems, you really should repair the base or you're kinda wasting your money, um, because you're gonna be doing it in the next five years, 'cause the same problems are gonna occur extremely quickly.
How bad is the base, did you say?
Uh, I couldn't tell you how bad it is, um, as far as it would be considered failing because of the cracking in it.
Well, normally, Gerald, doesn't, when you have base fail, failure, doesn't the road tend to, uh, bevel and sway? Um, not as much just because of the cracking, alligator cracking and stuff like that?
I would say, yes, uh, the alligator cracking is just about as much due to expansion and contraction of the material underneath it, which could also be a, a factor in the, the strength of the, of the underlayment, but, um.
Well, I agree. I'll, I'll just tell you, we took a workshop on this, is, is why we did this, and that was the number one thing they said in that workshop of the gentleman that gave the class. Is that if you have alligator cracking, it's just an automatic, it means you have base problems. Is, is why anytime we saw alligator cracking, we're just assuming that there's base problems, 'cause that's what that gentleman said.
So we're at, uh, cost to relevance ratio, so.
Overpriced.
Yeah, as far as what your opinion is of it, if, if you think putting forty-two thousand dollars into a street is a worthy cost at this time, or if it's a bit overpriced at the moment, um, it's just all personal. What you think, there is no right or wrong answer on this section.
Uh, all the homes on that area, are they all, uh, modular homes or trailer homes?
They're all manufactured besides the one next to the truck in this image is a site built, I believe.
Site built, and how, how new is that?
Oh, I don't know, it's been there for quite some time.
Well, and in relevance, there's other projects I'd rather see. I'm at one.
Yep.
Which kinda coincides with importance of repairs, really to me, but one.
Okay, and so, are, are you gonna do a one on your personal priority, as it, it has no priority, or just a two that it can wait?
Yep, it can wait in my personal.
So two?
I agree.
Overpricing, and it can wait.
Okay. Alright. So the next one's gonna be Austin. You'll see a lot of these failing streets are gonna be really your small streets, um, that don't see a lot of traffic. You will see some that are your larger streets, so they are coming. So just be ready for them, but this is another one that's a very small street. Um, that is where Austin's located, uh, right behind the plaza there that fronts Cameron. And then these are our notes on it. Again, I have more slides, so that is actually readable. Um, the comments that we made on this hundred block is it almost acts more of a path than a road of how it's designed, and it's just extremely deteriorated. This would be your projected cost if you were to do that. Um, if you do a mill with two-inch overlay, you're looking at a little under eleven thousand dollars. And if you add base repair into that, then you're a little over sixteen thousand. It's, it's a pretty small road there. And then that's the image of what that street looked like on December twelfth, twenty twenty-four, when we went out there and took a picture of it.
So that street goes behind, uh, Pruitt Insurance and all that?
Mm-hmm.
Side it.
It goes beside it, I mean.
Yeah, but, um. On Google, it has it going behind it.
Oh, yeah?
That's where they barbecue at.
Yeah, I mean, I, I see what you're saying, cuz it, it is, but I don't believe that's really right away. I believe that'd be more of an easement.
Would that qualify for a chip seal? Cuz there's only one house, right?
I don't believe it is.
Google, it carries around where you just pointed.
Yeah. Well, and, and that's what this is off of, this is exactly what you're looking at, uh, this is our G, our, this is our GIS, which is based off Google Maps.
Okay.
Um, but I believe that this is an easement.
Like, would you just cut it off right there, or?
Well, you would just, you would do it north to south.
Okay.
From the right away, cuz that's, that's what's out there today, if you were to look at the picture, it doesn't.
How do you end that road, like, do you make it like a?
Well, uh, so, if you ask a planner, there always should be a turnaround on a road. Whether you're going to do a hammerhead or a cul-de-sac, just because if you ever need emergency vehicles to go down there, or your trash trucks to go down there. Instead of them going down and backing up all the way out, they could go in there, turn around and come out. Would be the right way to do it, you could dead end, if you choose to do it that way, to save a little bit of cost.
I mean, here, basically, it looks like you end up turning into the parking lot.
Well, one turn goes into the parking lot, but then behind it, on maps, it has, like, like it's going behind the building, behind Pruitt Insurance. So would you cut off that access to behind Pruitt, when you do that turnaround?
You'd have to act where the right away is, so if there really is right away behind Pruitt Insurance, and you could come up with a different design.
Maybe have like a.
But under the.
Open them to go back there still, but.
I mean, yeah, it just depends how you wanna design it, um, it just depends what's really out there, you know?
Right, right, right.
If, if that really is right of way, or if it's just small easement that got notated as right of way on Google Maps for whatever reason. Cuz I've seen that happen, where they designate a road somewhere, and it's not really a road.
Definitely, in my mind, a five and a failure. Losing my voice.
I'm sorry, you said the street overall is a five, does the commission agree?
Yes.
Yes.
And then it's one block long, so I'm gonna go with the five again. About the surface, if you look, it's. Okay.
For sure.
Yeah.
Base condition?
I'm sorry?
Base condition, a five? Traffic impact, I think there's two houses that serve as access on here.
Cause the side of one.
I thought there was two, um, that are.
I didn't drive all the way to the very.
It's either one or two, it's no more than that.
Yeah, one of them looks like, well, there's, there's two, but one of them's labeled Ria Money Transfer Agent. Not that that's there anymore, but, yeah, it looks like two.
What is that, two houses?
Two houses.
We are on traffic impact, what your opinion is, if it's minimal?
Minimal.
And then number of blocks, and the intention, it is just one, one hundred block long. Um, the surrounding development, if it's a minimal. Or light, cuz you do have commercial in the area that could service off Austin as.
Right.
Yeah, that.
They could use that for that whole plaza.
Well, yeah, I see the, the like service trucks back.
Furniture, yeah, they take their furniture delivery in the front, or?
He said they barbecue possibly behind the meat market back there?
I think so, yeah.
So, that, that'd be traffic if they're bringing piss back there, or if they do furniture in the back, I don't know if they load and upload, and then I see the. Truck, the trash truck, they come down that road too?
They do, there's a lot of.
I would have to go with light development, just because of that amount of crap.
And it's commercial in that area too.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go with a three for light, uh, the importance of the repair, what's your opinion?
And it's right off the highway and it's visible, so I would raise it a little higher.
Present time, I'm in a two category on that.
Eight to ten?
Eight to ten years.
Yep.
Okay.
Which the, the cost was, wasn't unreasonable, but we'll.
The cost is.
Yeah, well, it could, and that could move up a little further up on the map being the cost.
Well, and this is what I'll tell you, Doug, don't get stuck on the numbers, because these numbers are gonna have the same ratio. If it's cheaper this way than other streets that you see, even though the cost raises, this is still gonna be a cheaper street than others.
Mine was more future development, you know, some go, because it's a, re, uh.
Commercial.
We call it residential be, on this, on the part from the highway up to the curb, but from the curve. And I guess that's a different street name, or it's, or, I don't know if it's easement even.
I, I think that's easement back there, I don't think that's right of way.
So.
Um, I could stand corrected on that, cuz I do not know that as a fact, but I thought that that's easement.
That was my, I'm not worried about money games, and, and because of that, that's why I said eight to ten years. Now, if. Those two houses go away and some business comes in there, we'd have to move it up, but that would be part of the project, so, anyway. Current time, it's not.
So as far as.
More important streets to fix at this time, in my opinion.
Okay, as far as the cost relevance of, if you were to take this on, what is your opinion on it? Is it a great deal, is it a really overpriced deal? For what you're getting out of it, what is, what is the planning commission's?
Between moderate and decent as hard as cost.
I'm gonna say moderate, moderate decent.
Moderate?
Yeah, that ratio is decent with the. Commercial aspect.
Uh, and then the last one's personal priority, um, if this has no priority to it, or maybe put it in the middle.
I think middle of list, considering.
Okay.
The businesses.
Go with that. Justify that.
All right. And we're blowing through this. We got, we have a long way to go, but we also have a couple of months to get this done, so don't worry about it. So now we're on Bogah. If you don't know where Bogah is, it's actually right here, just south of Mill there, um. As you go down the highway, you've probably seen the, the road is right, kinda right next to the county property.
It'd be easier for you to go to show enough in the cemetery.
They got over there.
Yes.
Backyard deal?
The, um, yes, it's, uh, no, Dusty Boots.
Arena?
Dusty Boots.
Dusty Boots is just south. It'd be down here a little bit, I believe, or maybe, uh, it might be right there, I can't recall, but it's right there on Oak, this is, this backs it. So if you go to Dusty Boots.
Corner right there.
It's in that space.
If, if you go on Dusty Boots, you probably were, are gonna turn on Bogah and get on the highway most likely. So that's where it's located, these are the notes, we'll get into them. Um, so, I believe there's only one one hundred block with this. What we saw there is they have longitudinal transverse cracking, they have surface loss, patch failures, potholes and edge feathering occurring. If you were to repair the road with just a two-inch overlay, it's a little under thirty-two thousand dollars for the length of it.
That's because it's twice as long as.
It's, it's a longer road, yeah.
Yeah.
Even though it's just one, one hundred block, it's, it's longer than what Austin was, which is why the price comes out more.
So is it from, from Oak Street to White Street, or Mason?
Bogah goes to White and terminates into White. And then if you, if you were gonna decide to do a base repair with it, this is one of those, we actually don't know if there's base issues with it. Because there, there wasn't anything indicating base issues, it is old pavement out there. Which would, based on the lifespan of it, probably means that you probably should do a little bit of base repair, but we don't know that for a fact, based off the cracking we saw.
Current material is?
The current material out there is asphalt. Asphalt with no curbs is what we have listed on there. Uh, that's a picture of it, if you wanna see, so you can see that there's. A lot of edge feathering that's happening along here.
Is that because there's no curb and there's a lot of water?
Running up the hill?
Yeah, it's, it's a part of that, edge feathering also occurs, um.
People driving.
Yeah, people are driving on it, it's just.
The way, the way a street is designed, down in the middle of the street. The asphalt is gonna be thicker and crowned, and so it's gonna be thinner over here, because it's designed to shed water to either side. So as it's thinner on the edges, when it's carrying heavier traffic. The thinner this, the thinner the surface, or thinner the, the asphalt, the more likely it is to crack with. Traffic. So it might be two inches at the, in the middle and, and an inch at the edge, or less.
So you got the boots, is it the boots and the head start in that area, but the?
Traffic count, I guess.
Yes, um, if you're looking, head starts towards the west this way, Dusty Boots would be down to the south, this way.
What's the head start? What's head start?
Head start's a, a daycare, that, it's on Hickory, but this, um, you can get to it from.
Block from there, you turn right on the, that middle street, what is it?
Yeah. The head start is located on.
Turn on that Mason.
Mason.
Mason, so it, it doesn't list it, but this is Hickory right here.
Yeah, I see it.
That runs, the head start, I believe is this building, no, it's actually this building right here.
Yeah.
That's the head start, so you can get to it from Mason, so if you came off Bogah and came down Mason, you could get to the head start.
Hickory is kind of the same as that road, almost somewhat, right?
It's similar, um.
Just from the color on the maps, I'm thinking Hickory's actually in a little bit better shape.
Yeah, it is, it's a little wider too.
Yeah.
But it's longer, you gotta.
Yeah, Bogah will start to see a little bit more traffic as, um, Dusty Boots continues to succeed in their ventures. Than it used to.
Do they have an entrance off of Bogah? Cuz I've only entered from Oak Street.
No, they have, they do.
Did you have a Bogah entrance, okay.
And Oak Street is a highway, right?
Yes, Oak is, Oak is the highway, yes, you can run straight through their parking lot, so you can either come on the Bogah side and come in.
Gotcha.
Or you can come off of Oak and come in, either way.
Okay.
Condition of street.
What's your opinion of the, the road, if you like to see the picture? That's what it looked like when we took the picture in January of this year. Um, before Dusty Boots opened and, or, or it's probably relatively the same.
There's definitely a uptick in traffic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That area on it, but, yeah.
I'm pushing for more.
Five, failure?
I, I think it's at failure myself.
Okay, um.
Only, well, I mean, you don't see the alligator cracking necessarily, but the edges are going away, so it's.
Right, yeah.
Doesn't it have alligator cracking though? A little bit.
Little bit, yeah.
Not like a major.
If it was, it's just beginning to form, that we didn't notate it, um, because there's a few times that, you'll see as we get in this, we'll notate that alligator cracking is beginning to form. Uh, but this time, yeah, this one.
Cracking.
The comments that we had on it was you have surface loss, and anytime you have surface loss, that means your pavement's aged a little bit at least. Um, you have patch failure issues, which means your patches are probably older. Um, potholes that are there and then edge feathering, but we didn't notate any alligator cracking, as you mentioned.
I'm at five.
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 All right, um, for the surface condition?
Yes.
For a five?
Yes, sir.
The base condition, again, there's, yeah, we're not, we're not certain on this one.
So the four?
Four, since it's just starting.
Okay.
You think four?
I say five, would you?
Well, it seems like it started the alligator crack, but it's just not full, like widespread down the entire.
Well, we didn't notate it, um, one of, I, I mean, from caveat, from the way that I'm gonna look at it as a planner is, um. We always tend to lean to the side of being precautionary than optimistic. Um, not saying that's the right way to look at it, that's just the way that we tend to look at it, and so if you have significantly aged pavement, probably means that your base is pretty old. Um, but it could, I would say it's no better than average, I mean, with that old of a street, I wouldn't say it's a good base.
Right there where it look like it's just dirt, like, so you don't even get, like, it's only like three quarters of a road?
This far?
Yeah, so does that not consider like base failure, or it gotta be all the way across?
Well, your base is the, is the, is the whole road that your, your asphalt is over, and so.
And you're missing a chunk of it.
That would, but a part of it's also gonna come your surface, cuz your surface is missing, so maybe what's underneath the surface is okay.
Okay.
But your surface, maybe your surface is in disrepair, but your base is fine.
Okay.
Definitely has extreme weathering, so.
Yes.
Okay.
So what'd you go with?
We had poor, is what I listed, but we can change it to whichever you like.
That's, it's another one of those things you don't really know till you take the top surface off, and so.
Exactly.
It could be failing, but we don't know that.
And that's the same with the alligator cracking, you know, we're, I listed as failure based on that workshop that we had with that gentleman. Um, but you can always get in there, you can say, this really isn't that bad.
Yeah, we're on base, right?
Yes, we're on base and.
Surface, four for base.
Four for base, so now we're on traffic impact, um, at the time we did this, Dusty Boots wasn't open, now it is, they seem to be pretty successful.
And there's one other house.
And they're going multiple days now, right, they're not just on weekends, right?
Correct, they.
They're doing football.
Pretty much the whole week, and they have a wide assortment and constantly bringing in, out, in and out vendors, so.
I'm in between three and four again, but.
So from moderate to large traffic?
I agree.
Yes.
Which one are you leaning more towards, or I can put a three-point-five if you're in the middle?
At this time, doing an assessment, yeah, three-point-five.
Moderate?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I like, I like three-point-five.
Yeah.
All right. This is only one block long, so it's gonna just be a one for you guys, um, and then your environment that's around it, um, you have a little bit of commercial. You only have one house that fronts it, I believe there's really two houses that front it, but one of them's a vacant house.
Yeah.
So one house that's, actually has traffic flow to it, and then you have a commercial development on the south. So based on that, um, would you like to say it's a minimal development that's surrounding, or a light?
Maybe light, with commercial use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This time it's.
Okay. Um, now the importance of the repair to the commission, what do you think?
This depends on the business it takes.
Yeah, that's what I'm starting, I'm, I'm at like three.
I said three.
Like three, yeah, I'd say seven.
Sounds good.
And then the cost of what's proposed to fix it, what we think currently. Is, you, you might be able to get away on this one with a thirty-two thousand dollar fix.
And it is a pretty long road.
Yeah, it's coming off the highway, two.
That price is decent to me.
Yeah, with how long the road is, it, it's not.
Compared to the other costs that we had so far, that looks.
Yeah.
Okay, decent, and then your personal priority on it?
Again, I'm at three on that, but. You can sway me the other way, if you think it's more important for development or.
See a lot of heads nodding on the three, oh, wait, three?
Three.
I think, yeah, three.
You can always change it if it gets.
Right, right, right.
Really, really busy.
All right, our next road that we'll get to is Bonham. If you don't know where Bonham is, it is. Just at the termination of Mylon there, um, there's a few houses, I think there's four houses that front this road. No commercial development along it.
Just past Bridge Park, right? Or am I thinking different?
I believe Bridge Park is actually right here, um, so it's gonna be next to it. But I, I believe this is where the billboard is at, if you know where that, the, the, um, that huge billboard is on the corner, I think that's where this is at. And then Bridge Park is right next to it, if I'm thinking incorrectly.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a chip seal road, um, there are no curbs, so we put it as a chip seal minus, um, those are the notes, we'll get into it. Um, it is one, one hundred block long again. Um, so the intersection with Cameron is in really poor shape, so we notated that whenever that has happened. Um, it's mostly gravel, but there's elements of chip seal in it, which, um, so that's why we put it as a chip seal road. Cuz it most likely probably was chip seal at one point in time, and then there's some potholes. Um, again, it's a short one hundred block, so your pricing's gonna look pretty good on it, um, if you were just to do a two-inch overlay, it's a little under twelve thousand. Um, in this case, you'll, right, and this one, you'll probably be doing some base work with it, because it's just such an aged road. That you'll be doing a base repair of a little under eighteen for that. These are the pictures of it, so this is the intersection of Cameron that we're referring to, that's in poor condition, and as you drive down the road, you'll get to this point. And you see, it's, there's some elements of chip seal in here, um, but a lot of it's gravel now.
And I see highways putting up a new stop sign, or city, or somebody's putting up a new stop sign there, is that what's? At the highway?
So it don't have a stop sign coming out onto the highway?
It's laying down in a ditch, it looks like it's brand new.
That would be a state.
State, putting a highway in there, cuz there's no, this is another one where there's no street sign, but.
Okay.
Are they living back there, is there someone living back there?
Yes, so there's. So there's, there's two houses on this side, and then I believe one on this side, no, I think there might be two on that side as well.
It's like an access to Rockdale Bridge Park.
Yeah, it curves around, it curves around into Mylum Street, but it's just a, that part where it dead ends the Mylum, uh, street.
Right.
That's just the dirt road along the railroad tracks.
Yes.
That portion of Mylum Street, and that right there is designated parking for Bridge Park. We worked on that on our workshop one time, finding parking for Bridge Park, you remember? Did we designate that area inset just past those?
That was gonna be the entrance.
That was gonna be the entrance, and then there was gonna be parking on, uh, down there by the water company, but.
Yeah, I mean, I remember the discussion about that the, they'd be parking by the water company, I don't remember talking about parking along this road in particular.
They end up, uh, putting something on where we were talking about parking over there by the water thingy. We were talking about parking on the side, but then they end up putting this building over there that out.
Right, well, there was a, um, a plan done by the MDD that discussed Bridge Park a little bit. When I first started, and they talked about parking, and the way they designated, if I can recall. Was its own parking lot almost next to the, uh, Southwest Mylum Water. Is what they designated, um, if we discussed it, might have been before my time, cuz I don't recall that.
Well, it ju- because it kinda influences my decision, well, A, driving down from the highway, it looks ugly. But if it's useful, if there's an intended use for it, it moves it up in my priority list, the only reason I'm discussing it.
Well, I'll tell you, as far as, um, Mylum has an intended use based on your comprehensive plan, that's your corridor for events, is what that plan calls for.
Right. To downtown.
Yes, is your event corridor, as your comp plan calls it out to be. Right, cuz the idea was you would install a trail system from Bridge Park to now Skate Park downtown area. And Mylum would be your event corridor that you would block off when you have Christmas parades and such.
Wolf Park and the Depot Street.
Yep.
Uh, Tim.
It all interconnects.
Gonna be like street dances and.
Right.
Events and.
Right.
Walking trail.
So, that makes the, that important for that.
Because it'd be adjacent to it.
What's the, what's the timeline on the event?
Well, I mean, that's as, as, that's a policy, I mean, as far as when you get events, you try to influence your applicants to use that, um. Which we have, we try.
Judging it as a street in Rockdale, not anticipating the other stuff, it's a ten-year out project for me. Knowing that it's gonna be critical, we're gonna have to start working some, wear some time on those streets to make them.
Chip seal though, I would do it quicker. That entrance off of seventy-nine is terrible.
It's terrible, it's horrible.
Okay, well, let's get back on the list, and that, those are good thoughts, we'll, we'll hash that out, what do we think as far as the street overall condition? Alright, and then if we're on to the, it's one block long, so we'll just put it as a five, um, the surface, what do you think?
Five.
The base condition?
Five.
Okay. The traffic impact?
Right now, today?
Today, as of today.
It's minor. You guys tell me what you think.
It is minor. It has potential to be.
That's, that's.
So how, how would you go about that? Cuz if we get that road going, then we can actually use it for like the parades or whatever.
Good, I mean, you could.
I want, I wanna say something overall about the scoring criteria, everything has been a five, 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 five so far. At some point, we're gonna have to differentiate amongst all these streets, cuz we won't be able to do them all.
Right.
Yeah, well, I think we're doing a lot of that down at the like importance.
Yeah, we talked about the last.
I think we should start using that, those half decimals as we get there, but.
Well, and, and that's why I say, you know, for those listening, you know, it sounds like we're rating all the streets bad, you gotta, we're starting with the failing streets.
Yeah, we're starting with the failing streets.
I mean, these are gonna be the worst scores you're gonna have, and then it's gonna get better, so, I mean, they will be differentiated. And then when they tie, we'll talk further if they tie of, of, of that list.
More important.
But, Tim, what, in other cities, do you rate it? Well, I probably started with better conditions than these streets we're talking about today. But do you rate it on the here and now, or anticipated?
The here and now.
Alright.
It's bas- based on what it is today, because of the fact that it's only gonna get worse, not gonna get better unless we do something about it. And it's something actually that we do every year, so we, we go through this exercise. And typically, it falls on the Public Works Director or Street Superintendent, you know, they will go through and rate all these streets. Um, and then, you know, identify those streets, recommend the streets, and council will add some and take some away and. And then we'll do those streets, and the next year we'll reevaluate them, because sometimes they may get worse faster than. Um, so, you know, this is.
But you, you do have to keep in mind of the potential, what you might be doing with it, or, or things you might do with it in the future. Versus one that way out that nobody actually uses, and nobody has plans.
And they're scored based on what, basically on what.
What you see now?
The condition of the street, the, the volume of traffic, type of development, the environment, those are the things that, that are.
Oh, now.
That are, that they score on, that they score on, but when it comes down to identifying the streets for construction. We also do groupings of streets, so that, you know, if we have ten streets that we're working on, they're not scattered all over the city. They're concentrated, cuz you're gonna get a better bid. And so this year you're doing these streets, next year you're doing these streets, next year you're doing these streets, and you might, or, or these, you're doing these areas and then these areas. So they're not completely scattered.
Keeping the material to be used in mine too, cuz chip seal is quick, right, and a lot less expensive. But also, I'm thinking about the grant, when do you anticipate you'll hear about the grant for the park?
Uh, January.
The grant for the what, the park?
The grant for the park improvements?
So, my thoughts of the traffic impact being minor is with that park there, I mean, as opposed to like five houses. You have the capability of a higher influx of, um, traffic. In the area, as opposed to if, if there were just five houses that took up the entire block, so it, there, there is, there does need to be a little consideration for the potential. I, I understand it's not going on right now, as far as like.
Well, if I could wave my magic wand, magic wand. The My- the Mylum Street and that should be one project to enhance that whole.
Yeah, you would most likely combine them together, or at least that hundred block of Mylum with this.
Premise that the park's not used at all.
Rarely, that'd be one of those minimal impact.
I have. Just last weekend, I had seven women go do yoga in the park. But they did complain about this road and getting in.
Yeah, um.
But if you fix that road, then people will probably utilize the park.
More so. I mean, you see women with baby carriages.
If those bridges, if those bridges were, anyway, we're getting.
Well, it, it's essentially what you are saying is, it's the same concept, if you build it, they'll come, is exactly what you're saying.
I think it's, it's, it's connected to Mylum, you got the park right there, and off the highway is. I think it's, yeah, need to keep that in consideration.
So we're back to.
We are on traffic impact, uh, Mr. Higden.
Minor, moderate.
Said minor, maybe moderate, um, depending what it could be, you know, right now it's minimal. But based on the plans in place of a potential park grant that could happen, you might see an increase.
And just the presence of the park, I feel like has more traffic capability than.
It does.
A row of houses.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be.
We'll do the exercise again next year, or the year after, so at whatever point that park does get improved, then.
I mean, if the park got improved and there was a parking lot there, then, man, this thing is way on this side of the.
Exactly.
Right now, here today, I'm at minor.
Yeah.
What did you say?
Minor, moderate, I'm honestly okay with either one or the mid.
Come in between.
Yep, same.
Minor to moderate.
Two point five?
The original plan for that park was, there was gonna be parking where the, by the oil well.
Right, which makes sense, coming straight out the highway.
Especially for handicap.
Well, I think with the central location and the, uh, the road down to the downtown district, like we were talking about with the comprehensive plan, whether, you know. Whether that happens or not, I, I think it's central location allows for more traffic.
Number of blocks?
You just have one block, so I went ahead and circled it for you. Now the environment, um, you could either go light density on this, or minimal would be my suggestions. Um, because you only have a couple houses confronting this, but you have a park with it.
Right now, here now, it's two.
Right here now, two.
Are we okay with two?
Yep.
The importance of the repair?
Five to seven.
Five to seven.
Yeah.
I got a lot of growth supposed to be going on in five years.
The cost of, in your opinion, if you came back in with some asphalt, that's your numbers, um, chip seal I believe is a little bit cheaper than asphalt is.
Decent.
I, I would have to go with base repair, and I'm still good with that number even there.
You're on decent or great?
Decent.
Decent? And then the personal priority?
It's in the middle of the list for me, right now. Only because I'm anticipating the five-year growth chart is predicting.
I would probably do it a little higher than three.
Higher, I'd do high, high priority, being that it connects to Mylum.
So we got two threes and two fours, so we're okay with the three point five.
I'll do four.
Four? Alright, four.
No, I'm standing my ground. It's here and now.
I mean, really?
Yeah.
See, we can say no in person, Tim?
Alright, we got. Breen is up next, um, Breen, this one's gonna be pretty quick for you guys, um. Breen's one of those that it says it's a road, and it is on paper, but if you actually go out there, you'd have no idea. Um, I'll show you a picture of it, but that's Breen.
Does it actually curve around and come back to Pear Street?
No.
That's another street in, in itself, or an alleyway?
That's the road that goes up to, uh, DeNietro Rito's house.
Yeah, there's, so there's, um. There's like an alley that runs right here. It's an alley, but it's not a street. So there's no connection, and it really is just a dead end, small, small road.
Go to Breen.
So our comments on that is you have some surface loss, cuz it's just a dirt road, it's more of a path than a road, and you have a po- some potholes in it. Um, the costs are gonna be extremely low on it, because it's a very small street, I think it's a little over fifteen hundred square foot to do the whole thing. That's why your numbers come out that way, of whichever way you'd like to do it, it is a dirt road, um, and that's the picture. And you would have no, you would think it's a drive more than a road, but it, it really is a road.
But unfortunately, it is an impact road when you're side street, when you're coming into Rockdale, you know, you see like that, and you go, hmm. But that's the old.
Can we go back?
Old town charm.
Yes, so this road is right off of Third Street, um. I think Charles can attest to this, if you weren't familiar with the area out there, you probably have no idea that this is a street.
You'd miss it.
You'd miss it easily, um, this is where your cemetery is, is these, is these green patches, um. So.
I would like to see it done something with it, being that she drives, her and her husband drive up to the right. And their house has been remodeled and done pretty nicely, uh, and they keep up with the grass around there. My lot's o- o- over, but, uh, I mean, she has a nice car with some wheels, a nice SUV and truck. But you can't keep it decent going up and down that road.
Is that actually a constructed base, road base, or is?
No.
Is there, there's no?
No, uh, you know, this is one of those, Tim brought up a good point, the city could really abandon this right away. And give it to the owners, and they, that way that it can be theirs, and they can do what they choose with it. But as of now, it's a street, so we'll score it, but it's one of those that, it's a street that doesn't serve the city really any purpose. Um, because it's not, if we go back to this, where it's at, you're not gonna be able to acquire land to connect that to Vernon. Most likely, um, so.
But if you abandon it, then she has no access to her home back there.
If you abandon it, you would give it to them as a permanent access easement? It, it's essentially her driveway at that point, it'd be both of their drives.
Split in half.
That's right, and they would have it forever, the land would have it forever, so if they were to sell it to their, to whomever, if they give it to their grandchildren down the line. It would remain as their access, so they would never lose their access.
Okay.
It just wouldn't be a city road anymore.
But our charge right now is.
Is it's a road, so we're gonna degrade it, but.
Air market for.
Yeah, this needs to be one to be air marked for potential abandonment.
Do our homework.
Yeah, I have a couple of abandonment notes.
But, but there's no road base, so it's all automatic fives again, right?
Council ain't trying to give up any land right now. Meaning, they're not trying to abandon any.
And I understand that.
So, you gotta keep that in consideration too.
I, I do understand that, that's.
Yes, um, hopefully, as the time comes, that they may feel it's beneficiary to abandon. This would be one of them, that I would suggest, um. Because it's not necessarily a reason for the city to keep something that doesn't serve any benefit to us. And they're not getting any benefit out of it, because it's just a dirt road, so the city's not providing services to that.
It'd be better to allow them the opportunity to.
To do whatever they would like, if they'd like to plant grass, or if they'd like to concrete it out as a drive, you know, give them that opportunity to do what they. Seem fit with it, but it's a road as of now, so.
The first four I have down is five.
So we have a five for the street.
Until traffic impact, we have minimal.
Minimal.
Okay, and that's one block, and then do you wanna go with just minimal development, cuz it's only a couple houses?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then your importance of the repair?
Ten plus years at this time.
Yeah.
Um, the cost of what do you think, if you were to actually do this, that's your numbers that you're looking at if you're going with asphalt?
Cost is decent.
I'd say high, since it's not as overpriced as some of the other ratios we've looked at.
Okay, and then personal priority? Can we shoot with that?
Twos, twos, twos.
Alright, we're on to Cherry. Uh, so Cherry's located just off the highway, um, you used to have the Gonzalez Restaurant, that was on that corner there, for those that aren't familiar. That would be Gonzalez, um, this is the welding next to it. A longer road, it's asphalt, this is the notes that we had with it, um, they had significant cracking. Along with some alligator cracking present, which is why it got the failure rating, um, they do have patchwork done. Surface loss, potholes, um, they do have complete pavement loss at the roadway edges, and then, uh, we put that the pavement's nearly rubble. Um, just because that shows that it's aged. Your pricing's gonna be higher with those ones, cuz it is such a long road. Um, if you don't do any base repair, you'd be looking at a little under forty-seven thousand dollars. And if you do base repair, then you're looking at a little over seventy-one.
About ten houses over there?
Thirteen and two businesses.
And then, these are the pictures that we had along with it.
Mr. Brunson, you think it's gonna need base repair and all that?
Yeah, probably so.
Um, these are the pictures that we have with it here, um, you can see the surface loss, you can kinda see the rubble here. Um, that, that's just kinda the comment that we had, um, the only reason we made it again is. It's significantly aged, it's, it's an old street.
And it's not like no dips, no hard dips and things.
No, no, um, but the reason, you can see some alligator cracking in this location.
Yeah.
So a five?
Yeah.
The first four or fives for me again, sorry, guys.
Yes. Traffic impact, moderate.
Yeah, you probably, so you have two businesses and I think.
Yeah, maybe even.
Ten homes, so you're looking at probably around one fifty to two hundred trips a day on this road, at least just from those servicing it.
Moderate number three for me.
Would that be moderate, would you consider a large?
I would probably consider it between the two, um, it's close.
I counted thirteen houses and two businesses, I think that's.
The reason I might go with large is, um, if you see this. You have a church located here with more houses that might service and come down Cherry.
Yeah, let's go ahead and enlarge.
Yeah.
So it's, it's an interconnected street with, might increase your traffic count a little bit.
Oh, and, and equipment moving in and out of the welding shop. Oh, and and equipment moving in and out of the welding shop.
So you only have one block here, so that's just gonna be a one, um, about the environment surrounding it, again, you have. Two commercial businesses with ten houses or so, um, and some of those houses, keep in mind are apartments. So they do have more living units than just one, so we say ten, but I know one of them, I think is a. Quadplex, so you'll at fourteen, you'll add, or thirteen, add three to the one.
Is that on the same road?
Medium density?
Yeah, it's right on the, um, end of Cherry.
Okay.
The the this drive here. Those are apartments.
Oh, okay, okay. On the other road is where they got the, which one is next to the other apartments by the piano bar, what road is that?
Summit?
Um, yeah, it might be s- might be Summit.
Goes by piano bar.
Right, well, okay.
And goes right to the church.
Parkway.
Parkway.
Parkway, okay.
And then Division and then Cherry, so Cherry is the last row, okay, okay.
Um, environment, what do we think on that one? Based on, you got a couple apartments on here, you have some single family, you have some commercial.
I'm thi- I'm, yeah, I'm thinking medium density.
Medium?
I think so too.
Importance of repair?
Four, three to four years.
I'm in between three and four. What do you think, Joe?
I think so. I agree.
Your cost relevance? Of what do you think, it's it's a longer road, I mean, you're talking, I think seventeen thousand square foot of road.
Even with the base repair, it's still not the most expensive one we've seen.
It's high to me.
The, yeah.
It's high, but.
We got a couple highs, are we okay with a high at two?
Well, I would anticipate saying it's a high cost road if I was standing before councils, so.
Yeah.
You know, but.
Yeah.
Alright, and then personal priority on this one?
Middle to high?
Middle list.
Three.
Got a couple threes.
Three's good for me.
Alright, going with the three. Alright, we're on to Darryl. If you don't know where Darryl is, um, I showed you guys a picture of Hillier earlier as one of our really bad streets. Darryl's just north of that, you have the baseball fields just north over here, Darryl is one of the roads that dead ends. I'll show you a picture of it here in a minute, but it is next to Wilcox, um, Darryl has. Six homes, six or seven homes that fronted, I believe?
I have eight.
Eight. Um, they're asphalt out there, the notes that we had on there is they had longitudinal transverse and alligator cracking, they had edge feathering present. They have some, we just noted here that there's grass growing in the right away, um, just for our own notes, um, cause that is an ordinance violation if we were ever to pursue it. And then I put a comment on these streets that terminate with no turnaround of something that you'd. If you had all the money in the world, you'd fix it.
Yeah, you you would probably put a cul-de-sac or something in there.
You'd put, if you wanna go a cheaper option, a hammerhead, um, those are the rectangular looking ones, uh, a cul-de-sac is a circular.
Go back to it, there's no other, it can't be made through, right?
No. Um, I know some people have kinda created a path through here, but it's not right away, um.
What's the street to the left of the street?
Coulter.
Oh, I see.
Okay, yeah. And Darryl is visible from Wilcox going towards the baseball field.
And it dead ends at the fa- ball field. I think it's a well-traveled road, isn't it?
No, not Darryl, Wilcox is, but not Darryl.
Okay.
Yeah, Darryl, Darryl doesn't see a lot of traffic.
You can see it from the, but you can, yeah, Wilcox is the one.
Yeah, the on- the only time you would travel along this portion of Darryl is to get to one of those houses back there.
Okay.
There would be no, no really other reason to do so.
And how many houses? Eight.
I'm glad you did that, by the way, cause this is all off my memory.
Well, and I even notated, um, on most of them, how many vacant houses there were to, there is, that seemed vacant.
I know one of them vacant on that road, um, this is what your pricing would be, um, so. Again, we suspect it's base failure, cause of the alligator cracking, so you'd probably go with the bottom number, but if you're just doing a two inch overlay. It's a little under twenty five thousand, but if you're to add a base repair on top of that, then it's a little under thirty eight. And then if you'd like a picture, this is what Darryl looks like on, right at the end of the twenty twenty four year.
Now, two, is it, it's a house or two on the, on one side that's newly built on Darryl? Think the Reverses possibly?
Um, well, yeah, they're newer, yeah, um, before my time, cause I didn't issue them the permits to build.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it could be within the last ten to fifteen years.
I start with four of them being fives again, guys.
Yes.
That's gonna be a comment on these, I mean, I don't want you to be discouraged by it, we, we're starting with the worst ones, so just keep that in mind, you know. Your ra- your ratings are gonna be.
Fives all the way to traffic impact.
Yeah.
What do we think on the traffic impact with eight homes, I know at least one of them doesn't have any traffic currently, it's an abandoned house.
I'm gonna say m-.
Moderate?
Minor.
Minor?
Yeah, I'm gonna say minor.
I can do that.
Um, it is only one block, so we'll just do a one, the environment around that, it's just single family, so you wanna do minimal?
Minimal.
The importance of the repair?
That, that open lot, is that one owner or is that like, is it lot at all?
Which one, which one are we talking about?
So you know, one side got like six homes and then the other one got four.
Oh, this?
Yes.
I do not know, I know that the north of this was all one owner that I think's tied into this house right here.
Okay.
Um, I I'm not certain on this one, though.
Okay.
I think it's one owner, but.
Wait, is that that lot that they've been clearing off?
Don't hold me, yes, um, yeah, they received some code letters and they started clearing the lot.
Okay, so it's not for development, it's just.
No, they had, um, significant traction debris out there.
Yes.
And so they were starting to clean it.
Orders of repair I got two.
Two?
Eight to ten?
Well, it's pushing it at eight to ten, it's not gonna be a road there in ten years, at the current rate, but.
Yeah.
Well, and and you know, like I said to the commission, this is just ideas, um, you know, a lot of these roads aren't gonna be done. In that timely fashion, because the funding, uh, you know, you can only fund what you can fund. And so this, this is just a general.
Right.
If you tell me it's eight to ten years, it doesn't mean it has to be done in eight to ten years, all that's telling me is it's more of a priority than anything that's more than ten years out. Is what your opinion is, that's all you're telling me with this.
I do too.
Cost ratio to it, like I said, if you're, you're probably gonna have some base repair, so it's probably gonna be that bottom number, if I had to imagine.
I'm getting, I'm getting used to these numbers, so I come back and say, well, that's pretty normal, it's.
Moderate or huh?
I'd say I. You know, and and what I'll say about the numbers too is, um, don't get stuck on just the monetary value of it, the, the idea behind the question is. What are you getting out of your buck, you know, how 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 much are you affecting when you put that cost down? You know, if I pay fifty thousand dollars for one house, it's probably overpriced, but if I pay fifty thousand dollars for twenty houses, that's a really good deal.
Right.
That's kind of the idea behind the question.
So the ratio I'm doing in my head is how many houses and.
That's the way to look at it.
Just dividing it out and, yeah, this is, I I would say on the high end, but not overpriced.
Oh, we alright with the two?
Cool.
And then your personal priority?
Can wait.
Alright.
And and, uh, do we, we don't get complaints on that road, right?
Well, not for the, not for the road, you know, I I've received some code enforcement complaints on the road, but not, not for the road condition.
Okay.
Um, now, I'm not the one to typically receive code, um, road complaints, so there's a possibility that Mr. Brunson could've got some. Um, but I'm not aware of any. Alright, we're on to Division, I think we got time for maybe two more of these, and then we'll get you out of here, you are making good progress.
Twenty, that was the edict you set out today.
I have volleyball today, so I gotta leave at three.
Well, I'll get you, we'll get you out of here quick, um, you are making, y'all have gotten a lot done.
You don't need a coin for this, do you?
That's where Division is, right next to Cherry, if you remember where Cherry was at, just right next to it there. Another longer road, which is gonna raise your price a little bit. Um, all of these roads have some commercial that front Cameron, so just keep that in mind when we go down there.
That rectangular building was, uh, the automotive repair place, correct? By.
Yes.
I think it's.
I think so.
It is, it is, yeah, cause that's across from Credit Union.
Yeah, I think.
I think that's what that rectangular building is, so if it helps.
And then this.
They got the middle building, then it's apartments on the other side, I think, on Parkway, yeah, cause that's apartments on Parkway Corner.
Okay.
It's a bike, the bike automotive.
Okay. That's where it's located, these are the notes, we'll get into them, um, but it looks like. Yeah, it's a little under twenty thousand square foot, so that's, that's why your price is gonna come in, and it was gonna come at it in a minute. Um, the notes we had, it's another just one block road here, there's significant cracking along with alligator cracking present. There's some patchwork, surface loss, potholes, you have complete pavement loss at the roadway edges, and then again, your pavement's nearly rubble, cause it's old. Out there, um, I do wanna make the note, the reason we notate that there's patchwork done is because there was a problem at one point in time. And so we've just notated anytime your road has patches, that it's just an aged road to a degree. Patches aren't necessarily a bad thing, if they're done correctly. Um, so if you just went in with an overlay, which is not what I would suggest, but if you were to do that, you're looking at a little under fifty two thousand dollars. And then if you do the base repair, which is probably what's needed, you're looking at a little under seventy nine thousand dollars for your pricing.
Fourteen houses, two businesses.
And then this is your road, um, as you can see, you have surface loss occurring with some. Potholes beginning to form right in this area, and then you have cracking that goes along as well. Um, it's just an aged road, is is what this one comes down to, is why a lot of your problems are present.
Pretty much same as Cherry Lane.
It's similar, yes, very similar.
All thing that would be different is the cost.
It's the what?
The cost, cause it's a longer.
Well, and if you remember, Cherry, um, was the one that did not have alligator cracking, so we said, we did say that that base was poor and not failing.
Yeah.
Maybe some signs of it starting.
Yeah, it had, let me go back and look, cause. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Cherry, you said failure.
Yeah, yeah.
So you want, we wanna do fives for the first four again?
Too many rows, they're all.
Um, now your traffic impact that you had on Cherry was large. Are you wanting to do large?
We just have a few less houses, but.
This one, this one, as far as a dwelling unit wise, they're gonna be pretty similar, cause he said there was fourteen of them. If you remember on the other one, they had apartments, so they had tin structures, but probably fourteen dwelling units, fourteen to sixteen, if I had to guess.
And that one apartment thing has four driveways, so.
Yeah, and so on this one, it's about the same, so do you wanna do large again? Okay, then you got one block along till be a one, uh, as far as your environment. You listed the other one as medium density, but again, you had apartments on that, this one, you only have single family and commercial.
And you're missing, uh, what street is this again?
This is Division.
Okay, okay, okay.
That we're on.
Normally, when you're like leaving the church up that way, you usually go to the first. Exit to the street, or you go to the last exit. Leaving, you wouldn't normally take the middle street, but.
I'd go if I hadn't been in a while.
Whatever we had on the other one, minus a number on that.
Okay.
I think we, yeah, put it same as Cherry.
Okay, Cherry, you had medium density, which was a four.
Three or four for me.
Me too, three or four.
Yep.
Do we wanna do a three point five?
Three point five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. The importance of the repair, you had Cherry listed as three to four years out. Does this one have as much priority, or maybe a little less, little more?
I think a little less priority.
Five to seven?
Slightly less, it seems like it has a little bit.
Five to seven is good with me, three.
Three, and then your cost ratio, you had Cherry listed as high, these are gonna come out similarly to Cherry.
Cost is base.
Cause this, this is gonna be more than Cherry, right?
Yeah, I mean, I go back to, so if you're, keep this number in mind, you're a little under seventy nine thousand for Division.
It's a solid two for me.
If you go to Cherry, you had a little under seventy two for the other one, so you're you're looking at about a seven thousand dollar increase. For this road, but it's also because it's a little bit longer than Cherry is.
Yeah, two.
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 And then your personal priority?
Hey, do we do middle on Cherry?
You did. Yes.
Say the same because.
You did a middle.
My camera saying that they're gonna repair in the same area, they probably would do all three of them roads.
I think having Cherry in that one.
Yeah, cause they back to back.
Yep.
Same then.
Alright.
Good call, Charles.
We'll do a three. Alright, last one, and I'll get you guys out of here. East Second.
What?
East Second Avenue.
East Second.
I didn't highlight the whole East Second, so my apologies on that, unless I've been sleepy, this is also East Second, this is a road.
Yeah.
This is a road, and there is one home that serves, the bar is right here, uh, Twisted Horns, and then there's a house right here on the end of the road. So just keep that in mind, it's a, it's a little bit longer.
So it goes back there too?
It does, it's a little bit longer.
Tie in to that church drive, that church driveway, that, is that like a, that's, that's theirs, that's not the city's?
Not the city's.
Okay, so that won't tie into that?
Nope, this is just one that will dead end with no turnaround to it.
I know it got a lot of trees and you can't hardly see down that road over there, it, that's also right before the big dip. In the road, uh, they got, uh, right there on East Second, going up towards Show enough. But I mean, it's not a problem, it's just, it's built like that.
Um.
Right by Harry McBride's house, he has a two story.
Uh-huh, yes.
Okay, so that wouldn't be included, right?
It is, um.
That's by Perry.
But that's.
No, 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 no.
That's first, I think you're thinking about first.
No, Perry's on first, this is second, yeah, yeah, this is second, it goes by, uh.
Okay, well, then it's included.
Okay.
And that word of houses.
It's on the other side of Show enough. Cause, uh, Perry's on one side, second is on the other side, correct?
So you, you have.
You're right.
Yeah.
So Show enough is right here.
Right.
And so the dip you're talking about is right here.
There you go, yeah.
That's the really bad dip.
Yes.
Yes.
Correct.
And there are, there's also a dip on first, but it's not near as bad, but it's right in here somewhere.
Right, it's a lighter one.
Cemetery is the green.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so there's a couple, this is gonna be your first one, that you'll see a couple hundred blocks, we'll breeze through it, don't worry. Um, the first hundred block, you do have alligator cracking present, as long as longitudinal transverse, you have edge feathering. You had significant surface loss in only certain areas, and then I also put the intersection with pecan is in failing condition. Uh, these are your pricings, if you were to only do this hundred block, don't worry, because I'm gonna give you the price for the street total. After this, so you don't have to remember this, but this is your numbers, um, if you're only doing overlay, it's a little more than sixteen. You're gonna do a base repair with that, so a little under twenty five. That's a picture, you saw that in the spreadsheet earlier, where you see that significant cracking, you have a lot of surface loss. The second block, the two hundred block, we actually have it listed as poor, hence the color change in the title for you guys. They only had longitudinal cracking here and edge feathering slash failure, and then. I also put a note in here that there was a patchwork that was done near that address, and it's in really bad condition. Um, this is your pricing, this hundred block is a little bit longer.
The two hundred block is where the dip's at?
Man, I don't know, I cannot recall that, um, I'll look at the image. Yes, most likely, cause I believe it's just south of where this image was taken.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's going towards.
It'd be, it'd be right behind where I was standing when I took, or where Justin was standing when he took this picture. Um, that's your picture of of that block, it's not really an indication of base failure, it is significantly aged, which might mean you have a little bit of base problems. Um, that's your picture of, of that block, it's not really an indication of base failure, it is significantly aged, which might mean you have a little bit of base problems. But I can't say that for certain, so we rate it as poor. Um, and then your three hundred block is in failing condition, um, you have longitudinal transverse cracking, you have alligator cracking, edge feathering again. Significant surface loss, and then you also have a terminate with no turnaround present here. Your cost, if you were to repair that, it's that one that I didn't highlight, it's not that long of a road. A little under twenty two thousand, if you overlay it, if you're gonna add a base repair in there, then it's a little over thirty three. And then that's that image, um, and it dead ends, so there'd be a house up there on the left. Your total pricing, this is the number that we'll use when you, um, total out the cost relevance. If you only do a million overlay for all of it, it's a little over fifty eight thousand. If you do a base repair with all of it, then it's a little more than eighty nine thousand.
Unfortunately, this one's on the high end of.
This is on the high end.
Still no curves.
There are no curves in this area, um, but again, this is, um, this is three blocks, three one hundred blocks, so keep that in mind. So even though you're paying that price, you're, you're affecting three one hundred blocks worth, um, which there are houses and some businesses around this area. Um, so in the essence of time, on the street overall, you had two failing blocks and one poor block, in my opinion. What is the planning commission's opinion of the overall street?
Say fail.
Okay, now this is where the block question comes in, is it may not just be a five to you guys, you had one of them is poor. Uh, and two that were failing, on the conditions of all the blocks overall, do you think it's still a five with it? Or do you think individually it's, there's some bad ones, but.
It's where a half point comes in.
Four point five?
Yeah, four point five for me.
Is the poor the part by, uh, Show Enough?
Poor is past it, it's past it, the poor block is right.
In the middle.
Right when you're past, this is the poor.
Okay, so that's the middle of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so failing is the beginning, which is right, Show Enough is right to my right in that picture.
Other side is failing for sure.
And that's right, and then the other side is failing, well, right in the middle, up to, um, the MLK, MLK.
I mean, that dip.
Right up to MLK, it's, it's poor, yeah, that's what we thought, um, in our opinion.
Give him a number, gang.
So we wanna do four point five, or round up to a five, four point five? Alright, and then the surface condition, you had surface loss on all these.
Failing.
Fail. Base condition, two of them we know are failing, one we're not sure, you wanna do a four point five again on that? Traffic impact?
Minor? Or is it minimal?
I would, if I were reading it, I'd probably go with a minor, um, because you have a business in that area.
Yeah, that can turn down.
Uh, number of blocks, you have two to three blocks, so it'd be a two, the environment. You do have some commercial with some single family in the area, um, it's only one commercial, you have a church in the area, I believe. So a church, a commercial property, and then some single family.
Light density.
Light density.
Alright, importance of the repair?
Two or three? I would say. What y'all think, what you think, Joe?
I'm thinking three.
Three.
Three, alright, cost relevance ratio, again, if you were to do the whole street. Um, anywhere in between these numbers, um, if you just wanna do an overlay, it's fifty eight, three. If you wanna do the base repair, which at least we think two of your one hundred blocks need a base repair, then close to eighty nine.
I put it at overpriced.
I would say, if that's three blocks, and you divide ninety, it's only thirty thousand per block. So the other roads were only one block, right? Uh, Cherry Lane is considered one block?
Yes, it is, um.
So I was, cause we, we're, we're combining three blocks right here, so it's not the full ninety, it's really like thirty per block.
It is, if, if you divide it evenly, um, I know the blocks are different lengths than evenly, but, um. Another thing to think about is the amount of house, did you notate the amount of houses out here?
Uh, it was five.
Five, five, so you have five houses with a bar.
One, two, three, four.
And a church.
And a church.
Yeah, six, it's six homes.
So you don't have.
By the church.
You don't have a lot of structures along Second, but you have a good bit of traffic. Because you have a church that's gonna see a significant traffic increase on Sundays and Wednesdays, usually. And then you also have a bar that will see significant traffic, hopefully on Fridays and Saturdays.
They used to hold events at the lodge right there on that corner, uh, next to the double.
Yeah.
Two story.
Yeah.
And then Show Enough, once they sell, it might be another commercial.
Yeah, that's true, you do, yeah, you, so you have two, you have two commercials, that's, I'm glad you said that. You have Show Enough, and then you have the bar at the opposite ends of Second. Yeah, so there's two commercials.
From the east side just to get to downtown or this area Walmart, they might take that route.
Right now, it would sway me considerably on my answer, but I'm stuck between.
The only, the only.
Maybe five or two.
The only thing different is they got that big dip, and a lot of people probably wouldn't go down that road because of that. Yeah, cause it's on the corner of that two story, um. So would you say between two and three?
That's where I'm at, yeah.
Were we thinking high, we got a high, or maybe a moderate, what do we think?
That's where I'm stuck. Between two and three.
We could do a two point five.
Two point five?
Two point five.
Alright, got a two point five, the last one, your personal priority of it, of the street total.
Middle list?
Middle of the list.
Yeah.
I agree.
Alright. Y'all got through a lot today.
With that being said, I hereby adjourn this meeting. Other planning and zoning commission.
Feel productive today.